Okay, good evening and welcome to our council meeting this evening. We're going to call our meeting to order by, with a roll call by our city clerk Kathy Valdez.
The records shall reflect that all members are present.
And next, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance, and it will be led tonight by, how about Patrick Johnson, our city manager?
Absolutely. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have an invocation tonight, the invocator for this evening was not available. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing is the approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one change to the agenda this evening, and that is the removal of Item D2, which is entitled Mixed Use Development. The originator of that item requested that it be pulled off, and so we're taking it off the agenda.
Okay. And we had no closed session today, so we don't have that. The next thing on our agenda is our, as a presentation, we have a proclamation today, tonight, and I'm going to call Danny Villasenor up. And we have a proclamation declaring Wednesday, January 27th, 2016, to be Danny Villasenor Day in the City of Vista, so I want to read his proclamation. So if he'll come and join me down there at the microphone. Do you all want to join me? Do you guys all want to join me? Oh, come on. Is there a place? Oh, there we go, okay. So we'll read the proclamation here, because it's important. Whereas, Danny Villasenor is a recipient of the City of Vista's 2015 Person of the Year Award. Danny has exemplified the spirit of service that is at the very heart of our Vista community. Whereas, over the years, Danny has spent many hours volunteering his time and providing in-kind donations to numerous Vista organizations, including the Boys and Girls Club, where he currently serves as president of the board. Whereas, Danny has been involved with the Boys and Girls Club since the early years of the organization, when he was one of the first five members of the club, and later in life, he became an adult volunteer. His generosity in providing free ice cream from Pepper Tree Frosty to incentivize superior academic performance in the Boys and Girls Club members is a reflection of his selfless service to the Boys and Girls Club. And whereas, Danny willingly serves in other capacities throughout the area, supporting local organizations such as Solutions for Change, and Danny has touched the lives of many, and his investment in the future of our youth will benefit the community for, as a whole, for years to come. So now, therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate Danny Villasenor on his selection as the City of Vista's 2015 Person of the Year, and hereby proclaim Wednesday, January 27th, that's me tomorrow, as Danny Villasenor's Day in the City of Vista. Your passion for Vista and genuine dedication to help others inspires us all. So thank you, Danny, for all you've done, and continue to do for our Vista community.
Yeah.
You're welcome. This should be a full opportunity to hear.
Thank you.
Keep smiling, keep smiling. Okay. We need a picture of all of us, so what's come out here? Okay. The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar, and those are Items C1 through C10. And the recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a Request to Speak card to the Clerk's Secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So they're Items C1 through C10, so do I have anybody that wants to pull anything?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second, or Councilman Regulera?
Yeah, I'll second it. Can you register my abstention from C4, please?
Okay, and I, can I register a no vote, please, on C10? Okay, please cash your votes. That motion passes unanimously with one abstention and one no vote. Okay, moving on, the next thing are discussion items, and our first discussion item is D1, is the use of drones. And this item was requested by Deputy Mayor Rigby, so I'll have to take that away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. My thought on the drone issue is, the federal government has, as you know, passed a law, the FAA is now requiring owners of drones to register their drones anywhere from .55 pounds to less than 50, from .55 to 55 pounds, that they need to register them and have the registration number printed on their drone, and carry a card with them everywhere. So far, that's all I've heard from the federal government, as far as drones that has been made public, or that they've completed the process on. As far as the state goes, the state is looking at regulation for drones, the use of drones, but so far, nothing has come down solid. I do know that PAWE recently did an ordinance regarding the use of drones during an emergency. But one of the things that I don't hear anybody really talking a lot about is the use of drones and the right to privacy, or the invasion of privacy, whether it's at a public park with someone using drone cameras to take pictures of you, your children, drones in neighborhoods going over homes, looking in skylights, bedroom windows, et cetera. Those things haven't been addressed yet, and that was just something that I wanted to talk about, and see if there was any, anybody here on the council who wanted to try to take the lead on this, because it seems that our state and our federal legislators are a little bit behind the power curve on this. And the federal government estimated that just Christmas 2015, more than 700,000 drones were purchased and given away as Christmas presents. So that means there are going to be, if we haven't already seen a lot, I've seen a few, a lot of drones overhead for, in our neighborhoods, and in our parks, and in our public spaces. So I just wasn't sure, you know, as a parent, as a woman, I'm concerned about some privacy issues with the use of drones and cameras. Now, if we have this discussion, I was, I had a conversation with the SDG and E representative, she was here yesterday for the State of the City, and she said that SDG and E does use drones for professional purposes in the community, and so that they would want to be involved, or have a discussion, or let us know how their drone use, what they use their drones for. But I was just wanting to know if we could have a conversation, if there's anybody else here on council who has the same concerns that I do, and maybe we could direct staff to come back with an ordinance or a staff report, fully discussing and giving options that we might have available to us regarding restricting use of drones in certain manners and locations.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yeah, I had, in advance of this conversation, had asked staff, and I don't imagine we had a chance to get any real detail on it yet, but I would like to know, and I asked specifically, do our existing ordinances protect our firefighters and police, and the Sheriff's Department, from interference with their official duties? I'm sure they do, I would hope that they do. And would those ordinances that would prohibit me from interfering as an individual without some technological device, wouldn't it be very conceivable that such an ordinance could be used to prosecute an individual who used a device like a drone to similarly interfere with duties? Do we have any thoughts on that?
Actually, I was able to deal with the drone issue last Friday at the League of California Cities on the Public Safety Committee, and did some, a deeper dive this afternoon into this issue in anticipation of tonight's discussion, and I do have both an answer to that question and some background information that the council might find useful. First of all, the legislature last year saw the introduction of 10 drone bills. Four were passed, three were vetoed, one was signed by the governor, and it actually directly addresses the issue that the deputy mayor brought up. It amended the Civil Code to provide that a person is liable for the physical invasion of privacy when the person knowingly enters onto the land or into the airspace above the land of another person without permission to capture any kind of a visual image, sound recording, or physical impression of a person engaging in private personal or familial activities. So that is now a violation of the Civil Code. It's the so-called paparazzi bill, and it was designed to expand the prohibition on paparazzis physically invading somebody's property to take photographs, and expands that now to drone activity. There's no requirement that these be offered for sale, it's simply the physical invasion of property. The current law in California, I believe it's Penal Code 148, prohibits interfering with a police officer or firefighter in the performance of their duties. It is believed that that statute would govern anyone interfering through the use of a drone, such as in the fire examples that we experienced earlier this year. Of course, the drone operator has to be located, but if located, and if there was at least knowing interference, then that would be a subject to criminal prosecution under the Penal Code. Finally, the FAA has, at this moment, taken a very restrictive stance on the ability of local government to enact drone legislation. On December the 17th of last year, the General Counsel of the FAA put out what they called a fact sheet, in which they said, "Substantial air safety issues are raised when state or local governments attempt to regulate the operation or flight of aircraft. A navigable airspace free from inconsistent state and local restrictions is essential to the maintenance of a safe and sound air transportation system." And they go on to say, "When Congress occupies an entire field, even complementary state regulation is impermissible." One can debate whether they have occupied the field to the extent that General Counsel implies, but examples of state and local laws that would be governed by this are operational restrictions on flight altitude, flight paths, operational bans, any regulation of navigable airspace, for example, a city ordinance banning anyone from operating within the city limits, within the airspace of the city, or within certain distances of landmarks, would be considered preempted in their view. Similarly, mandating equipment such as geofencing would be prohibited. They do, however, say that local government can require police to obtain a warrant before using a drone for surveillance, specify that a drone may not be used for voyeurism, which is really the ordinance, the statute that was mentioned earlier, prohibiting the use of drones for hunting or fishing, and prohibiting the attachment of firearms or similar weapons to a drone. Those would be within the purview of state or local government. That is kind of the lay of the land at the moment.
So did that answer your question, Councilmember?
It did answer my question.
Okay. Councilmember Campbell?
I think the city attorney answered the question that I was going to ask him about federal preemption, but maybe if Councilwoman, or Deputy Mayor Rigby could answer this, are you looking for a blanket ban on the operation of drones within the city, the operational use during emergencies, or expanding upon what the state has already prohibited, which is what activities can be used with the drone?
I, the state has already, as the city attorney has indicated, the state has already dealt with drones interfering with emergency situations and police situations, so that's already been addressed. The information that I had received from my contact at the state, I was a little erroneous in that information I received, my apologies. I did not know that that bill had been passed and signed into law regarding privacy issues. So that's where my concern is, because it seemed to me that the other, the other points with drones had been addressed, except for apparently firearms attached to them, that might be something we had talked about. But, no, I wasn't looking to expand any further on that, it was my concern that, that we have, we have a mechanism to protect our kids, and our children, and our families from intrusive drone use. So that's where I was going, and the city attorney has answered that question for me, that there already is a mechanism in the state that addresses that, and so my apologies for taking up the time of the council.
Councilmember Campbell, did you?
To follow up, I think there might be some confusion, at least on my part. The, the state law, that only covers the drone operation on a private property or private airspace, it would not include public space, would it?
The statute in question also deals with constructive invasions of privacy in other situations. Whether or not it clearly deals with, let me call the beach t-shirt incident, I don't think is entirely clear. However, I would note that this year, the League's, League of California Cities Public Safety Committee will be dealing with this issue. I believe there are still some holes that need to be addressed, probably in conjunction with the FAA, and the consensus is that the general framework should start at the state level, and not at the local level, because of the, the difficulty of everyone having a different rule in place. But, for example, I would happen to believe that we should either through the state or in conjunction with the FAA, be able to enact regulations in the use of drones over the moonlight during performances, the Hollywood Bowl, and those are some of the address issues that will be addressed in the coming year in the Public Safety Committee.
Well, then, to, to that, and thank you for that clarification, because it is my concern, not just over our skylights and our windows, but in the public parks, as I mentioned, so that would be a concern. So would it be agreeable for the council to send a letter to our legislators, or to the league, perhaps, supporting a bill that would address those issues of the drones capturing images in public places? Something to that effect, would, is it something that we can support?
I don't see any heads shaking.
I don't, I don't either. So thank you very much for your report, Mr. City Attorney, I thank you for your time.
Okay, so I guess, moving on then to our next item, which is D3, which is Red Light Photo Enforcement Program, and this item was also requested by Deputy Mayor Rigby, so I'll ask you to introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to talk about the issue of red light cameras in the City of Vista, as the contract that we currently have with Redflex Camera Systems is going to be expiring in May of this year, and it is scheduled for an automatic renewal, and I wanted to have this discussion before that timeframe comes to us. My concerns on the issues with red light cameras are twofold. First of all, we have the ethical lapses in the controversy surrounding the company that we are currently in contract with, which is Redflex. I'm just going to read from my notes, so I try not to forget anything. So my first point, again, is the ethical lapses with Redflex, and it is my intention that we get out of any contracts in doing business with this company. They are currently embroiled in litigation in multiple jurisdictions in the United States, as well as elsewhere, but in the United States, including California, Tennessee, New Jersey, Illinois, Ohio, and Louisiana. The charges that multiple members of the Redflex staff and higher executives have been charged with, there are many, but they include deliberately miscalibrating equipment, tax evasion, bribery, trade violations, and failing to pay prevailing wages in California. Three top officials from this United States office, it's an Australian-based company, but they have a US office, the CEO, the CFO, and their in-house counsel all resigned because of criminal activity that they took part in. In August of 2015, the CEO of the US Operations, Karen Finley, she pled guilty to federal bribery Also, from their Australia parent company, several members of their Board of Directors have resigned, or been asked to resign because of their participation in the criminal activity. There was also discussion at their board meeting this fall to eliminate red light cameras from their portfolio, as that's not the only business that they have. They are concerned about not only the scandal that they've been embroiled in, but also the fact that the profits from that business have dropped, and it's not as lucrative as it was 10 years ago. But I want to say, I recognize, and I want to reiterate, and make it very plain, that there have been no bad behavior here in Vista with our city officials. My issue is with that company, Redflex, and the issues that they have had within themselves, and I don't think that we should take, our good name and our good reputation should not be in business with a company like that any longer. The second issue I have is with the red light cameras themselves. First, my issue is with that company, I don't think we should be in business with them. My second one is with the red light cameras themselves. And we have to ask, why do we have red light cameras? Are they for punitive purposes, to punish people for running the red light as it turns from yellow to red? Or is it to stop accidents, prevent accidents from happening? If it's to be punitive, we've done a very good job of that, because it's cost a lot of money for our residents and red light camera tickets. The cameras catch drivers who scoot through a red light immediately after it turns from yellow to red. Most accidents that are happening are solid, stale, red light runners. The yellow light runners aren't really, aren't causing the number of accidents. And we've all been in the intersection when the yellow, the yellow light has turned from yellow to red, and there's somebody going through it. The cars waiting at that intersection to go for the green light are still waiting there, they're waiting for that intersection to clear. They're not typically, the drivers are not jackrabbitting out into the intersection where they're immediately going to be hit by somebody who has slid through the end of a yellow light, beginning of a red light. So that's one of the issues that we can talk about. We have tools in the toolbox nowadays that we might not have had when we installed these red light cameras years ago. We have tools that have been shown to be effective in other cities around the country, including extending the yellow light. In many cities, they have extended the yellow light even by as little bit as .3 seconds. Point, one-third of a second has reduced the yellow light to red light runners, the violations, anywhere from six, up to 69.5 percent, from 47 percent to 69.5 percent, and, and study after study after study since 2013. There's also a new tool in the toolbox that some cities have been using, which is to have what they call a universal red light, which would be to make every direction at the intersection red, all at the same time, for, again, as little as a third of a second, in which case that frees the intersection and the people going through it, so that they're not, more likely, they're, they're less likely to cause an accident going through the, the yellow light that way. So that, that's the information that I, that I have. The, the last point I wanted to make is, 53 percent of the red light tickets in, in Vista are from those right turns, the rolling right turns, where people kind of, they look to the left, it's clear, it's no traffic, and they just kind of roll through, and off they go. So that, 53 percent of our tickets are for rolling through a right turn. So I question the effectiveness nowadays of the red light camera program, and I'd like for the city to look at the tools that we have in the toolbox to stop the, or to reduce the violations that we might have with that, but in, most importantly, to not be in business with Redflex at all. And I think that by reengineering our traffic signals, we can reduce the number of violations. So I would ask my colleagues, at this point, to give careful consideration on this issue, and I would make, I am making a motion, I move that we give direction to the city manager to allow the contract to lapse in May, and not renew that contract with Redflex.
Councilmember Franklin?
I want to start by inviting anybody who came to speak on this issue. If you have not already, please take the time to make your voice heard by coming up to see our city clerk and asking for a speaker slip, so that you can have an opportunity to speak on this subject matter. We'd love to hear from you, we're glad that you're here. I very much agree with Deputy Mayor Rigby on this subject. I am deeply concerned about the safety of the residents of our city, and if I believed that there was compelling scientific reason to believe that this was going to put people's lives in harm way, harms way, then I would likely have a very different point of view on this. The fact is that, in the City of Vista, the baseline data that we collected was for a very short period of time prior to the installation of the cameras. The data that we collected are statistically insignificant to make a statistically valid comparison between the time that we have measurement with and without cameras. That being said, there are many cities around us who installed cameras and subsequently removed the cameras. There are very good data sets that exist, that with the same counting methodology, and that's very important, what method of counting accidents do you use? There are many cities that now have removed their cameras, and I have asked the staff, and I would like to ask our city traffic engineer, and our city engineer, if you would come forward to answer a few technical questions that I have. Would you mind approaching to answer a few questions?
Come on.
I'm, I'm going to ask you in a minute some questions about the timing of our yellow lights, and your work on that, and I'm going to ask you about the all-stop, or the time during which all directions are red, but I want to make a few more remarks, but I wanted to give you the idea of what I want to ask, if you have any thoughts on that. Specifically, I want to point out the financial harm that we do to our citizens with these tickets. I know the staff has got the exact numbers, and they'll correct me where I'm wrong, but essentially, we issue, I, I think there's about 8,000 recorded violations a year, I think we issue about 4,000 tickets, I'm, give or take a few hundred either way. The number of dollars in violations that we issue at $486 apiece amounts to about $2.4 million in fines issued, and I, and I believe collected, that's the, that's actually the amount collected, which I think is about half of the amount that we actually issue. So what I would like the council to think about truly is the fact that the average household in our city has an income of $50,000, and a $486 ticket, which, by the way, if you receive a ticket, and I have not, no one in my family has received one, knock on wood, but if you receive a ticket and you want during which all directions are red. But I want to make a few more remarks, but I wanted to give you the idea of what I want to ask, if you have any thoughts on that. Specifically, I want to point out the financial harm that we do to our citizens with these tickets. I know the staff has got the exact numbers, and they'll correct me where I'm wrong, but essentially, we issue, I, I think there's about 8,000 recorded violations a year, I think we issue about 4,000 tickets, I'm, give or take a few hundred either way. The number of dollars in violations that we issue at $486 apiece amounts to about $2.4 million in fines issued, and I, and I believe collected. That's the, that's actually the amount collected, which I think is about half of the amount that we actually issue. So, what I would like the council to think about truly is the fact that the average household in our city has an income of $50,000, and a $486 ticket, which, by the way, if you receive a ticket, and I have not, no one in my family has received one, knock on wood, but if you receive a ticket and you want to diminish the impact on your insurance, you have to pay another $100 for traffic court fee, and sometimes even if you pay that, either way, there may be an impact on your automobile insurance rates. So it's not just a $486 fine, it's also additional costs and additional insurance impact. So, you know, over a 10, over a, well, over a 10-year period of time, you're talking 20-some million dollars taken out of our local economy. These folks are visitors, they work in Vista, they live in Vista. They're absolutely people who would have spent their money at our restaurants, at our local businesses, or for other, you know, of life's necessities. The Federal Reserve Bank estimates, and anybody who's taken a basic economics class understands the multiplier effect, but the Federal Reserve Bank, basically, if you use their multiplier effect, they call it the velocity of money, you can project a fiscal impact on an annualized basis of as much as $17 million to our economy, and the money that is taken out, the vast majority of those fines, I believe all but $150 or $152, goes to the state of California. This makes the governor very happy, it makes our citizens not very happy. One of the other really compelling things is 53 percent, I believe last year was the number, of these tickets that are right turn on red violations. And my concern there is, you know, on my way here tonight, I was in a 35 mile an hour zone. At some point, I was probably doing 38 miles an hour, I apologize. As soon as I noticed, I hit the brake and I corrected back to 35 miles an hour. My concern is about, are we capable now with technology of essentially leveling fines on the people of Vista for the most modest of infractions of our laws, because we were now able to catch them? If technology catches up and we're able to install a computer in your car, perhaps in the future, we'll simply mail you a ticket every time your automobile reports to us that you've exceeded the speed limit by any amount. I mean, you know, that's a, not an illogical, you know, taking this to the absurd, I mean, someone will propose that someday, and it will come before us. If you take the revenue from those right turn on red, and you leave the more egregious 90-degree violations, well, the problem is, the program doesn't pay for itself then. Then the city, if you took the, the revenue away, the city would begin to lose a quarter of a million dollars a year, it wouldn't break even, and, and I understand and I acknowledge that this is not a revenue, you know, equation for the city, this is about public safety. But it certainly would probably be compelling to us all if we were having to spend a quarter of a million dollars of the city's funds, even though that's not coming out of our personal pockets, I think it would be a slightly different calculus for us. However, when we're spending $2.5 million of our residents and the employees of Vista companies, and our, and the customers of Vista businesses, we're spending two and a half million dollars a year of their funds. It's a really devastating financial impact. If you earn $50,000, you probably bring home, you know, about $44,000, $45,000, that's being optimistic and not taking some other payroll taxes out. If you look at that $486 as, you know, more than 1 percent of the take-home pay of a Vista family, I really think that the fine is excessive, and I think that the, the harm that it does is, is something that we should consider. One of the things that I asked the staff, and I, I don't suspect we're ready to talk about this, I looked myself, and some of the data are there and some are not, but in the cities like the city of San Diego, and Escondido, and, and Oceanside, and Poway, and other cities that have removed their cameras, we really have this excellent opportunity to analyze what's happened after they've removed their cameras. Did the number of fatalities increase? The reality is, the newspaper and public opinion have not realized that they made a mistake. Instead, they're editorializing and asking Vista, as one of the last cities that has not removed its cameras, to follow suit with the majority of other cities that originally installed them. In fact, we're now in the, in the vast majority, minority of cities that originally installed these cameras. This is a subject I've heard from a lot of voters on, and a lot of citizens, and always with the same point of view. I have yet to receive a communication from a citizen asking me to please stop posing the cameras, please support them. I have not received that communication. I have a number here in my book about this issue from people, including one, who said, "I've never had a ticket, but I want you to know I was rear-ended by somebody who came to a sudden stop." The Insurance Institute for Highway Safety says, in a published study, it's available on their website, that red light cameras increase rear-end collisions by as much as 15 percent. Now, there are other, you know, compelling factors, and we know that it does have some effect in reducing, you know, right angle collisions, but we really don't have, I haven't seen it, and it's certainly not from the one data point, which is the year 2004 data that's continually compared. So we have one year of data, and we're comparing it with a number of other years of data, it's just not enough runway on both sides to make a really statistically valid comparison. That's the thing I really want us to understand. I don't yet think I've got, I, I don't think that we're going to reach a majority agreement on this to end the red light cameras. I hope that I can convince one of you to join us in our way of thinking on this, that really the, the impact and the harm to a very large number of citizens that is very demonstrable really outweighs the speculative harm, the speculative potential harm, and it is speculative. We haven't seen families and, and victim activists in other cities come forward and say, you know, that, there's, there's no, there's no body, there's no lobbying body, there's no association, there's no group of citizens that's demanding the implementation of these cameras to the opposite. Almost everything you hear from the, the public dialogue is a request to remove these cameras. And so, you know, this is something that when I ran for this office, I promised voters that I would come to this council, and that I would do my best to change your mind on this subject. And so, that's pretty much the end of my soapbox on this. I do want to remind again, anyone who wants to speak on this subject, please come forward and get a speaker slip from our city clerk. And before I conclude, I did want to ask a couple of technical questions, and I think it's really something to follow up on, but I'd like to understand what we've done from the traffic engineering department's point of view to analyze yellow light timing, and also the length of time that all directions are red. Because really, the research demonstrates that those are the most significant things that we can do to improve the safety of our intersections. In fact, one, one more statistic I want to give you. The Texas Department of Transportation did a study, you should read it, it's on their website, and it said the, they, they studied a large number of right angle collisions, and they demonstrated that the average time after the red light was 8.9 seconds. What does that mean? It means that it wasn't somebody who was trying to cheat the light. In the majority of these, in the vast majority, overwhelming, the person who ran the light, in fact, did not realize that they were opposing a red light, and it was not an intentional violation, but an accidental one. And so, you know, there's a strong statistical case in that study that the folks who are causing severe accidents are actually doing so, not intentionally, but without realizing it. And the fact that we have additional enforcement is not going to stop somebody who unintentionally violates the law. It does, however, certainly have a broader impact on other folks. So, if I could ask for what our analysis has been and how we reacted to what we've learned on those two subjects.
Mayor and Council, just to introduce who's at the staff table, we have our city engineer, Greg Mayer, and our traffic engineer, Sam Hassanin, who will address the question.
Thank you.
So, as far as the yellow timing, we have always followed the state standard, and then there's clear standards on how to calculate the yellow timing, and that's what we've always applied, specifically at the five intersections where we have cameras. We have gone a little bit above the standard for, I think, throughout all the years that the cameras have been in place. Recently, the standards have changed, and they've been made to lengthen the yellow timing, and that standard took effect August 1st, 2015, and we had implemented that in July 2015 in compliance with the new standard. We, as far as the all-red clearance interval, we have always had that at every intersection, whether it had cameras or not. We have a, our typical standard is that one second of all-red clearance after every yellow interval. We have not done any specific analysis of our own, of what the impact is of longer yellow versus shorter yellow, but I have seen many studies out there.
So just to clarify what you're saying, the state of California analyzed and, and determined that the length of yellow, I'm, I'm going to surmise, had a real impact, as, as we all know, and this has been well discussed with regard to this topic. They so believed that our present level of yellow light timing was inadequate, that they issued a state mandate that our municipality and all municipalities increase the amount of yellow, and that just happened last year.
Correct, but I do not know the basis of it to tell you. I've not seen an actual study behind it.
I'm, I'm going to speculate and admit that it is speculation, that the reason that they did so was because they believed it would create safer intersections throughout the state based on their research. I might be wrong about that, but I, I think that's a fair thing to speculate. So, that's really the end of what I've got to say, but I, you know, I, I don't know if we're going to find agreement on the motion, which I want to second, that Deputy Mayor Rigby made. If we, if we cannot find agreement on that, I hope that we will at least commit two, two things. One, I'd like to address the issue that was raised in the email, and perhaps our city manager can, can illuminate on this subject, the issue of negotiating for better rates in distant years, as the, we all received an email from an activist on this subject, and it, it demonstrated how other cities had negotiated better pricing in years, you know, four, five, six, and beyond, and every year that we owned the equipment, their rental rates were reduced because of the depreciation. I, I would hope that we could negotiate better rates for the, for the value of the taxpayers, but also, you know, if, if there's not agreement ultimately on this, I would hope that we could at least agree to continue to study and have dialogue on this issue. It, it, it is, it is not about saving money or making money for the city of Vista, because frankly, the, the numeric implications are small for the city, they're, however, very vast for our residents, and for the people who do business in our city, we're dealing with great sums of money that really impact people's lives. And because this is about people's safety, and I do take that very seriously, as I know we all do, I would ask that we continue this dialogue about how we can make our, our intersections safer. So with that, I would conclude my remarks.
Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to keep my remarks fairly short and ask a couple of questions that are fairly pointed. During the course of the time that we've had the red light cameras at the limited number of intersections we have them at, have we not seen a marked reduction in serious traffic collisions at those intersections?
Yes, we have.
So, when the points raised, in my opinion, about this being a public safety issue, which I agree that it is, and I've received comments from numerous constituents in the city saying, "We don't like the red light cameras, but please keep them, because they've made the intersection safer." Since I've been driving here in Vista over the last 12, 13 years now, I've seen anecdotally a marked reduction in the serious number of collisions that I've seen in those intersections. There's an easy way to avoid getting a red light camera ticket, don't run the red light. Our yellow times in the city are, have always been longer than they've been required to be at the minimum. When the red light cameras were installed, I believe we extended the yellow light times, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, when we talk about other cities that have completely removed their cameras, it's been twofold issues. One, when you look at the city of San Diego, when they installed them, they were trying to make a lot of money, and they put them at every intersection they could find to put the cameras at, and as I recall, they actually shortened some of the yellow light times at those intersections to increase the number of tickets they were giving out. So they were trying to generate revenue. Well, it didn't work, and nor should it have worked. It was not a safety issue, it was a moneymaker, and they were losing a significant amount of money, because they had them placed in intersections that had low volumes of traffic, and never had serious collisions to begin with. So they took their cameras out, as they should have, because they shouldn't ever have been there in the first place. I think when Vista put the red light cameras in, staff and the council at the time did an excellent job of analyzing and evaluating the need for those cameras, the locations that they needed to go at, and did it based solely on the premise of creating a safer intersection for drivers in Vista. And it's worked. Major traffic collisions are down. Now, when you look at the number of red light camera tickets that occur based on a right-hand turn, it represents a significant percentage. But I go back to this following point, all you have to do is stop at the intersection. Now, if you could tell me, what's the speed that you have to approach the intersection and the distance to activate the mechanism? Is, is it a certain speed?
Yes.
Is it 2 miles an hour, or is it 15 miles an hour?
It's 15 miles an hour, and the sensors are located before the white limit line, so the speed is measured ahead of that, when the light has already turned red.
Right. So, you're not slowly rolling through a right-hand turn, you're ignoring the red light, you're going through it at least at 15 miles an hour. So, the common misconception that I've gotten feedback from a few folks is, you know, they did a "California Stop," quote unquote, and they got a ticket. That's not the case. It's not a 2 mile an hour rolling through, it's not going to get you if you're, you slow down to 3 miles an hour and slowly roll through, it won't activate the sensor to take the ticket.
The system will not activate under 15 miles an hour.
Right. So 15 miles an hour, we should all know, is not safe at all. It, it's not slowly going through, you're not paying attention and seeing that there's no oncoming traffic, you're just making a right-hand turn irrespective of oncoming traffic. So, it's a safety issue. So I think those tickets are well warranted at 15 miles an hour. So, with that in mind, you see a safety issue, a blatant disregard for the red light that's active, oncoming traffic. I've near, I've had people pull out in front of me who have run the red light on a right-hand turn, and it's nearly caused a traffic collision, because they paid no attention to the fact that traffic was coming through. So, while I may not like the fact that it's a $400-plus ticket, it is a very avoidable cost. Pay more attention, drive safely in the city, and it's worked for the most part. I remember the first year the cameras were in place, there were a lot of folks that would stop very abruptly at the yellow light, but people learned, you can go through the yellow light, that's okay, don't go through the red light. The yellow times were extended. So, when we talk about this, maybe there is something we could look at, which is extending yellow times, but I think we'd need to know what those yellow times are, what the state standards are, do we exceed those state standards? But I've noticed over the years, they have gotten longer, especially at Vista Village and Civic Center, or Vista Village and, and South and North Santa Fe, that intersection. So, you know, this is not a revenue generator, that's not why I'm looking at it favorably, it's a safety issue. The fact is, traffic collisions have gone down from prior to when they were put in. The violations that occur on the right turns are not slow, rolling through violations. So at this time, I'm not in favor of removing our contract. The one question that I would ask the city manager perhaps is, are there other companies that we could look at that provide the service?
Yeah, it's something we could look at.
So I think that's worth evaluating and looking at moving forward. Are there other companies that provide a substantially similar service, perhaps at a reduced cost?
Councilmember Franklin.
Well, just brief further thoughts. My concern with the data that the city advances as the baseline pre-camera installation data is only, how long did that period of time measure with the same methodology? Before the, it was, it was a year or a year and a half?
It was a year.
It was one year?
Yeah, it was one year of data.
That was 2004.
Prior to the camera installation, that's correct.
So, my concern is that we have one year of data, and we're comparing that one data point, which may or may not be statistically representative of a number of data points spread over, say, five years, and we, we hold that one spread over, say, five years, and we hold that one year out as evidence that see traffic collisions are down. My concern is that data in itself, really, if we've studied statistics, that one point of data really can't be reliably assumed to represent a larger number of data. There are, on the other hand, a large number of studies that have been done in other municipalities and states with larger data sets with the same methodology used to collect that data over longer periods of times, both before and after cameras, and those data are really mixed on the result. And so while I would understand that if we were going to accept 2004 as truly representative of the number of collisions at these intersections, that if we looked at that comparative with the data with the red lights in, that would be more compelling. But because I can't consider one piece of data representative of a larger number, especially, by the way, we're dealing with very low numbers, so, you know, and I don't remember the exact number, but, you know, if the, you know, if the collisions went from, you know, 20 to 40 at one intersection, that would be a doubling, and therefore, we could call it, you know, we could say, "Look, it's doubled," or "It's halved," but the numbers are pretty small to begin with. So, but what I'm looking at, because the only thing I think is really statistically valid, I'm looking at the research that comes from outside of Vista that's been done with longer, more scientific methods, and I think that we can all agree, I'm not a mathematician, I always tell people, you know, that's why I decided to get into politics, but I think we can all agree that mathematically, statistically, that one data point isn't necessarily representative of the longer, larger set of data. So for that reason, I remain convicted in my thoughts and would just ask my colleagues to remember the other impacts of this decision.
I know that, I know the mayor would like to get to the speakers, just, but to put the collision data in perspective for the council. In 2004, we had the baseline that you were referring to of 44 collisions, and since then, it's gone to 33, 33, 33, and now we're at somewhere in the neighborhood of 18 to 19. So if you look at a baseline data, the baseline data from the first three years that it was in existence, were dropped by over a third in terms of collisions over the last 10 years.
What we don't know is whether or not 2004 was an anomaly in a similar five-year period, just as the last one or two years, which demonstrated a large reduction from the three years before, both periods of time, we had the cameras. We don't know if those are anomalies, we don't know if next year we'll have 33, and the real data line, the trend line, will be in the low 30s, high 20s. We really don't understand what that trend line is because of the, I mean, I'm just, it's a dubious quantity of data to consider to be truly statistically valid. There's a lot of other good data. IAHS, the Institute, Interest Institute for Highway Safety has studied this issue at length. There is a lot of really good, scientifically valid. I know we have some scientists in the room who have classical scientific training, who understand that the statistical method employed here is very dubious, and that's what troubles me, and that's why I invoke other, more scholarly works of science and research on this subject.
Can I take the speakers now? Are you okay with everybody? Okay, Winifred Meiser. Can I ask him, did you get a ticket?
No, I didn't get any tickets, thanks the Lord, but I do know of a particular incident where one person got one of those right-hand turn tickets, and I know this, to stop, and I myself, I know that if you stop and then turn, I don't know, but there's 15 seconds, but this person got a photograph from the entity that does this kind of thing, and they said that in the picture, you can see there's three cars making a left-hand turn from the street, this person was going to make a right-hand turn on. There was already three cars in the intersection, and they were stopped, and then they turned, and they were told, when they protested the ticket, that they had only waited three seconds, not five, and they got the almost $400 tickets, the $100 school, and a week out of their life and the aggravation, and the resentment, and I tell you, that's no small issue, the resentment to all of the above involved in the red light cameras. I've known them called some names beyond red light, so I won't say them here, but they are not happy with them, and I think maybe, and I'm just saying this as a outside statistical, I avoid those intersections, I will drive around another block because I don't want to get, not that I'm a red light runner, I've been driving a while and have so far, so good, but I will tell you that if I can avoid them in that intersection, and maybe any stores in the vicinity of them, I will go somewhere else because I don't like to even think I'm going to get caught up in the yellow light turning into a red light, and I'm in the intersection because traffic is slow-moving, and sometimes that can happen, you get a buildup of traffic on both sides of a street. The four-way red light, I know that, I'm always really carefully watching the four, the red, the four-way red light, I haven't seen it, I've seen it red turn into green for the new one very, very quickly, within a second, so I don't know how much time I have left here, but I think I would like to see how much time is really given to four-way, four-way reds, I think that would be the better solution all the way around. And certainly, I'm doing turning right, should have to turn at least 10 miles an hour before turning right anyways, so I hope that they will dispose of them and give the people a chance to act like sensible drivers, as they must do in general with 12,000 miles a year, 15,000 miles a year drivers. Thank you.
Thanks, Winifred. How about George Meiser? George, want to speak?
My name is George Meiser, and I was thinking about this, the yellow lights that we were talking about, the standard timing, whatever that is, adhered to that, but the four-way, where all four directions stop, I think that is a very good idea, and I think the obligation of having these, what I call, Nazi cams available, we don't need them. And we've got enough deal with this new aggressive driving that you're running into around here, and now aggressive government, I don't care for it. So anyways, I like the idea of the four-way stop. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Bonnie Armstrong?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for all the service you give our city. I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but I got a one phone call that invited me down here just to see what you guys were going to say. So my point is that, one, the couple issues that I'd like to address, the young man third from the end there, he mentioned casually a indication that the ticket was $400. I can prove it's not. I got one of those tickets. It says right here that it's $490 plus with traffic school, $542, okay? And I want to come back to that. I entered the intersection when it was yellow, and again, like the lady before me said, there was traffic that, you know, kept you from going, but I got a picture on a piece of paper, Christmas, that said I ran the light. I don't have any tickets, I don't speed, I don't run red lights, I'm very careful looking both ways, I have a driving record that proves it. I don't, I don't know about the seconds and timing and exactly the second that it was, but I know I'm a good, safe driver, and I don't feel I deserve this ticket. I'm not familiar with getting tickets. I got this at Christmas time, I had family coming and going from out of town, I set the letter aside, I thought, "I didn't do that." So I'll look at it, and it gave the impression that you go to traffic school and it wouldn't get reported to your insurance company like you were a bad person or something. So I thought, "Well, okay, I didn't do it," but I, how do you prove you didn't? I tried to call the city about it. I'm retired, I'm in my 70s, I don't get up at the crack of oh, dark 30, I don't have to, I've done it most of my life. So I sleep in later in the mornings, and then I have a medical routine I go through. So by the time I'm ready to get on the phone and call, I find out that the city or this department doesn't take calls on traffic tickets that have to do with a red light unless you call between 8:30, excuse me, I'm not up yet, and 11:30. So I've been trying to call them, couldn't get through. So I thought, "Well, all right, it says that, you know, I have to go to traffic school," so, you know, I didn't feel like I deserved that ticket, but I checked online and I got a traffic school thing. So then I'd set this aside. The shock of getting the letter was something. I looked at where it said, you know, right here, traffic school, I didn't notice that there was an appearance date, so I blew that. So when I'm looking at it again, because I'm studying my traffic school things, it says that I was supposed to have been in there at December 30th. I thought, "Oh, my God," because I just realized that. So I call, and now it says I'm going to have a $300 fine because I didn't show up when they told me to, way over here in this great big section, they tell me I have, I don't have an option. I can pay the fine or go to traffic school. You know, so it's just like they're out to get people that don't run around and violate these things. And now, it's over $850 I'm supposed to come up with, and like I said, I was in that intersection on the yellow because I was taught that if you're in the intersection on the yellow, you know, you have time, and your front wheels are, you know, halfway past the, you're okay. Now, apparently, they've changed that.
Bonnie, I need you to kind of wrap up if you could.
Okay, well, what I want to wrap up is, it's not $400, it's, you know, almost $800 now. And for something I don't feel that I did, and there's no option, you know, that I was aware of, that I even did this thing, except that way over here on the right tiny, it says appearance date. So now, here I am, a citizen that doesn't have tickets, you know, I don't do speeding, I stop at all red lights, I watch each way, I went in on that intersection on a yellow, and I remember where I was going that day, I wasn't in a big rush, you know.
I need you to wrap up, Bonnie.
My wrap-up is that the fines are exorbitant and unrealistic, and I, believe me, I don't drive through that anymore. I drive through residential areas to go around, going through that intersection.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
David Johnson?
Hi there, ladies and gentlemen, my name's David Johnson, just had the pleasure of listening to Bonnie Armstrong, and I think it came out loud and clear from Bonnie Armstrong's argument, "Where are my accusers? How am I, or any of you people here today, supposed to stand here and have something happen to you, and there is no one here who saw it?" What happens if you're driving a car, and you did run the red light, it takes a picture of you? It's you, you know it's you, but no one else saw you do it, just a red light camera. That's only one witness. You need two witnesses, not one. Also, what happens if someone, say, your wife, your husband, your spouse, borrowed your car? It's been known to happen, mine's in the shop half the time. Now my friend, or my wife, or husband, it's this day and age, folks, you know how it is, they get a ticket, but it's my car, and I got the ticket. Why I have to pay a ticket for someone else who ran a red light? Where are my accusers? And as Bonnie Armstrong pointed out so fervently, how do you fight this? I will say this to the Vista Sheriff's Department, tell Officer Skaggs, tell Officer Martinez.
Excuse me, could you just speak to us?
Okay, tell them, it's open to the public. When I get a ticket from the Vista Sheriff's Department, I get a ticket from the California Highway Patrol, I know who gave me the ticket. I go to Vista Superior Court, the Vista Superior Court says, "Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth, so help me God?" It's now no longer between me and the sheriff, it's no longer between me and the California Highway Patrol, it's among the three of us: me, God, and the Highway Patrol, me, God, and the Vista Sheriff's Department. Where are my accusers? Thank you.
Could you maybe, Patrick? Could you maybe address, no, I'm talking to my city manager, could you maybe address, if somebody has a dispute, you know, with a ticket, how, what the process is?
That's correct, they can appeal it, go to the Vista Sheriff's Substation, which is on Main Street in downtown, and they can sit down with a community service officer and go through the ticket, and watch the video of the ticket, and make a determination from that point.
Okay, so there is a way of, if you don't think you should have that ticket, there's a way of appealing that.
Correct.
Excuse me, Cliff Kaiser?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, just a couple of brief comments. I believe that the fines are, in fact, excessive, and I realize the city may not make money off of that, other than covering some expenses, but I assure you that the red light camera manufacturer and maintenance people are making a ton of money on this, and there's ways that I think that you can, with due diligence, find a better way or to reduce those costs. The other thing is, is I don't agree certainly with the right-hand turn red light violations. The winner of the Strawberry Festival 5K is probably going to run close to 15 miles an hour, that's not a very high speed. And the, well, that's it, thank you.
And Mayor and Council, if I could, just to let you know, on the fine amount of $490, $490 that is set by the state, the state of California gets 186 of that, the county gets 145, and the city gets 158, just so you understand the breakdown and the fact that we don't control the amount of the ticket.
Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. The speaker's brought up some points that I wanted to have our traffic engineer address again right quick, which is, the red light camera system activates when the light for that direction of travel is red, it does not activate prior to that. But as I recall, it does begin recording a video if a car's approaching the intersection at a speed when the light is red or it's about to turn red, so that there's video evidence of that violation as well as the still photos, is that correct?
That's correct, and that's reviewable, like the city manager said, by going to the Vista Sheriff's Substation.
And that's also, I recall, on the letters that are, the notices of violation or the citations that are sent out, there's a link that they can review that online as well? Or is that not currently the practice?
I'm not sure offhand.
Okay, okay. Also, I understand that those citations before they're sent out are reviewed prior to them being issued, so it's not an automatic issuance if the ticket or the system activates.
That is correct.
And what's, you know, the percentage of dismissal before those are even sent out or before someone complains?
Yeah, it's very large, it's probably, actually, I have a sample from 2014. So it's about, about half of them actually get thrown out just through the initial review process by RedPlux and the community service officer.
I think the statistics were somewhere in the 13,000 to 14,000 range, and it got brought down to the low 8,000 range.
Right.
So about half were dismissed because of some issue where the driver wasn't perfectly visible in the picture, so there's not, basically, if there's not 100% proof that that person committed the violation, or very high proof that they committed the violation, it's dismissed before they're even notified of the violation.
That's correct.
So that, I think, eliminates a lot of the concerns that I have heard, which are, they're getting violations, that there was no violation. they're getting violations, that there was no violation committed. There are mechanisms for them to seek appeal of that, and go to court, should they choose, just like any other citation.
Yes.
It's just the evidence is, is very strong, and it's hard to refute photographic and video evidence of a violation. The other speaker's brought up about the all-of-way, all the red lights being red at once, and I believe you mentioned that that is the case.
We have that at all of our intersections.
At a one-second interval, yes, and I've actually seen that myself, where they're, they're all red at once. So, I, I think that a lot of the concerns are addressed, we already have the, all the right lights red at once. It's not a slow turn on red when you're able to get a ticket, the system's not even active until you're going over fifteen miles an hour. So, a lot of these points have already been addressed. So, I'd like to offer a substitute motion to the one on the floor, which is that we direct the city manager to allow the renewal of the current contract, or the extension, and direct him to evaluate other companies that provide the service in the future, and come back to the council at a future date, to be determined by the city manager, with any other potential options, should there be any.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I guess, first of all, I don't really like red light cameras. I'll just put that out there.
Did you get a ticket?
I, I don't like, I've had, I've gotten a ticket from a red light camera, so, and I got them from a really bad intersection in San Diego, that has since been removed. I was pretty unhappy, I was in a rental car, I thought I got away with it, actually, so, I mean, but I was wrong. I mean, the picture showed up, I looked at it, I'm like, excuse my language, but crap, they got me. I was, I was right in the middle of the intersection, so I was very unhappy. I don't think any of us like getting tickets, you know, nobody wants to get pulled over, nobody wants to get a ticket, so, I mean, I definitely feel for those speakers that have come up here and spoke about that, I'm with you. And it is a little bit Big Brother-ish, you know, you know, we've got cameras there, you know, Vista's got five intersections, how many cameras do we have through those five intersections?
We have a total of nine approaches at the five intersections.
So, I figured out, I guess my math was, I thought it was ten, but it's about four-hundred-and-forty, or something like that, that we pay out and rent to Red Flex?
We pay two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars per month for approach.
Okay, so it's a considerable amount of money that we pay, and I guess the rest, the ticket money ends up going to the state and the county, for the most part, and the city, can you tell me how much the city gets? Per ticket?
Yeah, one-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars.
Per ticket?
And thirty-eight cents, to be exact.
Okay. And then, so, that's a lot of money, I get that. Like I said, I've had to pay, I don't think it was quite that much, this is when these things first came out, but I do want to address some of the, I guess, concerns that my colleagues brought up, and that is, is it punitive, or are we doing it for safety? And I think the answer is that we are doing it for safety. But there is some punitive part to it as well, because I think any ticket that you get has, there's punitive damage being done to the violator. If I speed, and I get caught on the freeway doing seventy, eighty miles an hour, and I haven't hurt anybody, what's the damage? Nothing, but I'm going to get, if a highway patrol pulls me over, I'm going to get a ticket, and that's punitive, right? I mean, I'm being unsafe when I do that, so I think there is a little bit of punitive, as well as safety, but I think our previous councils voted this in, because we were having a lot of accidents in certain intersections, and I commend them for only putting them in the intersections where we did have problems. And as Councilman Campbell mentioned earlier, I think City of San Diego is one of those cities where every district and council member in that district wanted to have a moneymaker in their district, therefore, I think some of these things were, were getting out of hand, and what they started to realize is, if you don't really have violators in those intersections, these things don't break even, or make money for you, in that, for that matter. I think we barely break even on these, if I'm not mistaken, it's not a moneymaker for us, and I think it's because we've put them in high-volume intersections, but also intersections where we've had a, a history of people violating. And I know one of the big ones is South, South and North Santa Fe intersection at Vista Village. I think we can all agree that that's probably the worst intersection, not only in Vista, maybe North County, right? And I get frustrated there, too, especially right now, when the construction's going on, you know? There's times when I've, I've thought about it, but to be honest with you, I make that second thought, and I stop. I do a lot of work in Oceanside, they've removed them, and I tell you, Oceanside Boulevard and College, a lot of red light runners. Thank God there hasn't been a lot of accidents, and that's what we're trying to avoid here. And you're right, statistically, one, one year doesn't make solid statistics, but I don't think that our previous council went on the one year, I think this was probably a buildup, and, and accidents continue to grow, that's probably the high point, I'm guessing, of where we were for that, that particular year. But if we've reduced from forty-four down to eighteen, I don't know, we may have saved a life, maybe we didn't, like you said, it's speculative, but I want to, if I'm going to speculate, I'm going to speculate on the conservative side, and, and the chance that we might save a life, or just someone getting maimed, or just hurt, or damaged to their vehicle, because the type of accidents that we're trying to avoid are the T-bone, T-bone type of accidents, and I don't know if anybody out there has ever had a family member in a T-bone accident, I've had two close family members, one in a T-bone, one in a rear end, one was a drunk driver, but the other was actually running a red light in Oceanside, and lifelighted out the whole, the whole nine yards, cut out of the vehicle. It's a pretty scary feeling, thank God they, they lived and survived, and they're fine, but if we are, by doing this, and airing on the side of being conservative, or perhaps inconveniencing people, and, you know, again, fining people what seems like an exorbitant amount, but if we're saving lives, I'm willing to take that chance, you know, I am willing to take that chance. I don't normally like these types of programs, like I said earlier, at the very beginning. I am conservative, I'm a Republican, and by all means, I should not be supporting this, but I'm looking at this as a Vista, who has a wife, three kids, one that's driving, one that's going to be driving next year, God save us all. But our kids are out there, and I think about that, I make decisions based on what I think my family might experience, what you all might experience, and it's not my job up here to, you know, take polls by the phone, or what have you, and, and see what, what the feeling is out there. Again, I don't like getting a ticket, and I don't like red light cameras, but I'm making a decision, as someone who was voted in, to help protect, keep Vista safe, and there are people out there that support it, and I, and the people that I know talk to me and don't like them, however, they do support them, because they know we have made some intersections very safe. And I will go ahead and second that motion, substitute motion, it's on the table.
And I, and I will jump in here, just as long as I can, before you guys go back at it again, but I would just, John said it very well, and I agree, I have grandkids out there driving, and my family, and I, I err on the side of public safety, and, and the T-bone collisions, because they're, they're the dangerous ones, and that's the one that these red lights actually prevent more than any other, is, are the T-bone collisions that happened. And, you know, even when you say fifty-three percent are, you know, rolling around the corner, there's, they're breaking the law still, if you're, if you're doing that, you're breaking the law, and, and I can tell you, I've run a lot of, I've run a lot of yellow lights, but I haven't, I've never gotten caught, because I, when, when I see that it's been yellow for a bit, I always stop, but, but I wouldn't like to get a ticket, and I always try to stop at those lights, I actually go on the air of the side of stopping before I will run it, so. And I have a question, we talked about, you know, the tickets and things, and I wondered how, how many tickets Vista's are, versus how many tickets are not from Vista, just out of curiosity?
We looked at that, and talked about that, I think it's twenty-nine percent are Vista's, seventy-one percent non-Vista's.
Twenty-nine percent Vista's, and seventy-one percent non-Vista's?
Yeah, the twenty-nine that physically live in the boundaries of Vista, twenty-nine percent.
Yeah, so it must, so it's probably cut through traffic, so many people, I wonder, people are hurrying through town to get, you know, from Carlsbad, or to Bonzol, or Fallbrook, you know, that get those tickets sometimes, too. And then, let's see what other I had here, well, I'll just, I'll just, I'll go on to these other guys, but I, I'm going to support that, your motion, actually, also, so. Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you. I, I just want to say, I know that each of the members of this council is absolutely committed to the public safety of the people of Vista, I don't question that for a second, I am as well. And, and I also want to say, it's, it's not just because I believe public opinion is overwhelmingly against the red light cameras, or to score political points, I really, in looking at the financial harm that it does to our economy, and the, the sense that, you know, I once lived in a, in a municipality that had speeding cameras, we could, if we chose to, in place, I'm sure Red Flex sells them, because I've seen them, cameras that measure your speed as you pass, and if you're in violation of the speed limit, it mails your ticket. I don't know what standard for, for violation there is, I'm sure it's tweakable, but the point is, there is a Big Brother aspect to it. We are imposing a massive fine on a lot of people, like some of those citizens who spoke, who are not grossly abusing the privilege of being on the roadway. And I, that's my biggest concern here, is we have the technological ability to catch that individual who has technically, you know, violated the law, but who otherwise demonstrates, you know, a complete commitment to safe driving. I know there are some gross violators, people who cheat and try and get through, and they deserve a ticket, they really do, but I think what we've removed, through the use of electronic means, is we've removed some of that discretion. You know, if you look at the percentage of, we, we have a residency of ninety-eight thousand people, I assume about seventy-five thousand of those drive automobiles, the thirty percent of the tickets issued, it's thirteen, what, seventy-five thousand drivers? We have ninety-eight thousand people that live in the city, so you're saying maybe there's sixty thousand drivers?
Fifty percent.
Okay, fifty, I, I mean, I was being, I was, I was being generous in the other direction, but let's just say sixty thousand are, are drivers, maybe it's fifty, maybe it's forty, whatever it is. We're issuing thirteen-hundred-and-fifty tickets a year to Vista residents, so it's two, three percent every single year of Vista drivers are getting these tickets. You know, and I can't imagine, for somebody on a fixed income, at Christmas time, what, nearly nine-hundred dollars, or eight-hundred dollars, and, I mean, it's, part of, part of this is the Big Brother thing, a lot of it is because California's government system is so broken, and we have taken fines in this state to a point of absolute absurdity, to inflict such severe punishment on people that are at the level of income of our average family in our city. It really, it, it becomes overly punitive, and I, I think we're making a very sharp and very painful point with a lot of our citizens and residents, and our neighbors, who are not lead-footed, they do not approach their responsibilities as a driver with a lack of seriousness, or a lack of regard for other people's safety. It is the massive impact of this program on people who are otherwise law-abiding, and absolutely committed to being safe drivers, that, that truly does concern me, and, and again, you know, I would, what I asked earlier is, if we're not going to agree to the motion that was offered by the deputy mayor, and that I seconded, I hope that we will be able to agree to ask our traffic engineering department to continue to study this issue, and I would really humbly request, in the sense of fairness to the people that live in the city, that we not take one year of data and hold it against a, a spread of five or six years, and, and imply that, that is truly a representative data point. There's a lot of really good data out there, from other studies, been done by state departments of transportation, and, and other agencies, that we trust to rate our automobiles for safety and other things. So, I guess I would close with that. Point of order, with a motion and a second, there was a substitute motion, but the maker and the seconder of that substitute motion not being willing to accept that substitute is in order to vote on the motion that's been seconded?
The vote is on the substitute motion first, to replace the main motion.
And then there will be a...
Technically, once, if the substitute motion were passed, then it becomes the main motion, and you would vote again, typically in this body, if the substitute motion passes, it's clear that it would pass as the main motion, and we don't, have not commonly gone forward to have a second repetitive vote, but technically, that is the way it would be structured.
I don't, I don't know that I really object to the substitute, because it's the exact same thing in reverse.
So, it's your turn, Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you. The question was asked, if any of us had known anybody who was hit in a T-bone accident, and my colleague might remember June twenty-sixth of last year, my nephew was hit, my niece, my nephew did not survive, my niece and my great nephew spent a lot of time on life support, fortunately, they are, they did survive, but it's going to be a long recovery for them, so yes, I do know what that is like. That was not a yellow light turning to red light, that was, as has been brought up, a majority of the T-bone accidents and the severe accidents with red lights are people who are running red lights that have been red for a while. The average is five-point-nine seconds into a red light, not as the light turns from yellow into red for that one second, or half a second. So, yes, I do know what that is like. My question was for Councilman Campbell. My motion was, you might recall, to give direction to the city manager to not renew the contract with Red Flex, not just for the issues that we've talked about regarding red light cameras in particular, but Red Flex specifically, and whether or not we want to be in business with a company like Red Flex. I still submit the answer to that is no. And your substitute motion, I really didn't hear what you said, it was, it was very light. So, I, I still would like to have an up or down on my motion, that we do not renew a contract with Red Flex. If the rest of my colleagues want to discuss finding another vendor, and doing other things with the red light camera issue, I'd like that to be voted separately.
Point of order.
Okay.
I would submit that the motion, the substitute motion pursuant to our procedural rules was made and seconded, and as the city attorney noted, is the first motion to receive an up or down vote.
Right. I would also say, being that everybody that was in trouble with Red Flex resigned, the company's got to be more squeaky-clean now than it was before, because they're, they're being looked at by, you know, authorities, so, so we're going, are we ready to vote, then? Wait, Deputy Mayor Aguilera, can I raise these hands?
So, to clarify, a yes vote will affirmatively instruct the city manager to renew the existing contract in May. A no vote would oppose the renewal of the contract.
Yeah.
My understanding was... The yes vote, the motion was to allow the contract amendment to proceed, but to also thereafter consider, at some point in the future, the possibility of substituting in a different... a different contractor, should such a contractor be deemed appropriate. So, a yes vote would be to make that the motion, to, yes vote on his motion is to renew the contract, but to consider in the future a possible change of contractors.
So, we're not locked in in May to Red Flex?
Yes, you would be locked in for another year if the contract is renewed in May.
Before we vote then, would you be willing to amend your, in case the city manager decides, and I doubt it, but if he decides he wants to use a different contractor, would you vote to give him the authority to select in May whatever contractor he chooses through the city's official processes? That way, we don't, we're not instructing him to renew with Red Flex, but would you agree to re-style your motion so as to simply instruct him to continue the red light program? And, you know, you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
So, that we don't tie his hands, if you want him. Or perhaps, we just take that out and, let me just give you one more thought here. Perhaps we just take that second part out and then the city manager could come back to us if he feels there's a need and we can always?
That was part of the motion, if there were such viable options that he felt deemed appropriate. But I think one of the challenges we face, we're at the end of January, May is coming up relatively quickly in the speed in which these agreements generally proceed. I don't think there would be, maybe the city manager could tell me otherwise, but the latitude to find a new company and change an entire contract by the time in which the existing contract on the 12th of May or whatnot would have to be?
I agree. That would be a rather speedy process. One of the things I want to point out, though, that the extension with the current Red Flex contract is for a two-year extension, as it is written, just so everybody's clear. It's a two-year extension.
I am aware of that. And I think one of the challenges with this is that this item, with all deference to Deputy Mayor Rigby, who brought it forward, to make a substantive change of vendor as the sort of secondary fallback, I felt personally would have needed to have occurred sometime at the latest mid-last year to evaluate potential other vendors, to put out an RFP and whatnot. Is that, I'm not gonna ask the city manager if that's an accurate assessment, but we're too short on time, I think, to reevaluate this at this time, to continue a red light program. There would probably be some lapse.
I would say that, that's fair to say. The timing to get an RFP out, to evaluate it, and then if we were to choose a new vendor, the timing to install new cameras at those intersections would be more than three, three and a half months.
I would like to reemphasize, however, not on the issue of whether we should keep or eliminate the cameras, the issue of negotiating a better price, which was raised by the email that we all received. Other municipalities have received better pricing on the same equipment in later years. And I would hope that we would, as a sense of the council, ask the city manager to employ whatever means at his disposal to negotiate the best possible pricing for the city.
I agree.
Yes, and I was gonna say, I think that could be assumed to be part of that motion when I said evaluate the best options for the program moving forward. I trust the city manager's judgment to exercise his authority, moving forward, to get the best deal for the city and look at the best possible program. So, my motion stands as was stated.
Did we vote yet?
No, we have not.
I couldn't remember.
So, I'd ask the mayor if we could call for a vote on the substitute motion.
Please call for a vote.
Can we have the city clerk read the motion one last time, please?
So, the motion will be to allow for the contract to be renewed, but allowing the city manager to look at the best options, which might be negotiating better prices and also looking at additional vendors.
Okay. So, please call for the vote. Please cast your votes. That motion passes three to two.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we instruct the city manager not to renew future contracts with Red Flex, if that's still in order.
That was my motion.
Do you want to second it?
No, not one.
Point of order?
I'm not sure it's not in order. Do you want to second the motion?
To the city attorney.
City attorney, I have a question over here.
Can we make a motion on a motion that was just voted on in the reverse? Or the inverse?
Directly the opposite of the motion that the council just passed. It would normally not be considered to be in order that way.
I don't think there's a second on the floor. I'll withdraw my motion.
So, it's, you read through that?
I'm withdrawing.
We're done with this? Okay. Okay, so, there's no public hearing scheduled tonight, and we have no oral communications, do we? No, no oral communications tonight. So, we have our speakers. So, with that, we're gonna go to announcements and remarks, and I will do my mayor's comments and then I'll work my way on down the line there. So, I want to thank you to Vista Chamber for hosting our annual State of the Community Luncheon yesterday, and a thank you to all of those who attended it. My State of the City address and a list of the city's significant 2015 accomplishments has been posted on our city's homepage at cityofvista.com, if you'd like to see that. The San Diego Humane Society's Mobile Pet Clinic will be on site at the Wave Water Park's parking lot, providing affordable vaccinations and microchips. That's this Saturday, January 30th. So, you can stop by to renew or purchase a new license for your pet also. And that's at the Wave Water Park's parking lot. ARP volunteers will be at the senior center to provide assistance with taxes. Oh, it's almost tax time, you guys. Happy note. They'll be there to help with taxes at the senior center. Appointments can be made beginning February 2nd. And you can contact the senior center at 760-643-5290. That's 760-643-5290. And that's to make an appointment. Walk-ins are also welcome. And just check with the center for the available tax help hours. And with that, I will move on down to Councilmember Aguilera.
No comment.
Councilmember Campbell?
No comment this evening.
Councilmember Franklin? Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you. Yes, actually, I wanted to report back that I attended the California League of Cities Policy Committee meetings last week. And I missed all the good times on public safety, but I was at the fabulous time of revenue and taxation. And I did want to just talk a little bit about a couple of items that are still winding their way through committee or legislators who are still trying to draft the language for some proposed bills coming up. One was, and I don't know if the city attorney can address this, SB 7, there's some language trying to be drafted to clean up SB 7, and I'm not sure what cleanup means. There were no details offered. That was the bill that passed as a result of, the city attorney can address that. Looks like he wants to talk.
The cleanup language relates to the provisions in the bill which provided that unless a city adopted a moratorium before a date in February that I can't recall, they would lose their ability to do so. And that particular provision's being removed from the statute.
Okay, thank you. They're revisiting housing and development for us again because they're trying to put back in some of the provisions that we lost when redevelopment was legislated out. But we're not gonna be seeing anything maybe until 2017, 20, or 2017, 2018. They're also floating a measure that would require, or a bill that would require, the enhanced infrastructure finance districts, the EIFDs. Those bond issuances would require a 55% voter approval. And sales tax, the CITUS issue that we've been talking about for three years is still an issue. Nothing's come from that yet. One of the issues, one of the big things that we talked about was regarding language in a legislative action for unions that would require cities to pay employees time, for time that they spend in union orientation meetings. So, that hasn't been finalized yet, but that's language that they're working on. And the other one that was intriguing to me, maybe not relative particularly, specifically to a city, but Prop 30, which is an additional tax which is gonna be sunsetting. The speaker talked about in the one meeting that the sunset of Proposition 30 tax, the state budget office has anticipated that the sales tax rate that we have currently would continue to steadily increase, that the sunsetting of that tax would not be detrimental to the state coffers. However, later on, in the same meeting, the same speaker said just the opposite. So, well, I guess we'll wait and see what happens, but they are still trying to renew and extend Prop 30 taxes. So, those were the only ones that are really relevant to the city of Vista. So, I just want to report back that some, it was a long discussion. It was a good discussion. It's always interesting in rev and tax. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our city manager, Patrick Johnson, have some announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a workshop coming up. We haven't had one in a while. So, we're having a workshop on Tuesday, February 2nd, at 2:00 PM, and it's regarding parking regulations in the city. So, there's been a series of community meetings that have taken place before this, and so now it's time for the council to weigh in on parking regulations within the city. So, I'd welcome community at 2:00 PM next Tuesday. Tickets for the Moonlight went on sale this past Saturday. So, if you're interested in Moonlight tickets, season tickets, or single-day tickets, go to moonlightstage.com.
You can't get single-day tickets because somebody tried not until March.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Season tickets.
Only the season tickets, yes.
And then next, or in a month and a half, you'll be able to get the single-sale tickets.
Yes, because we had somebody that was trying to do that and they couldn't do it, so.
Thank you for reminding me of that. And one last comment, went to the Moonlight, to the New Club M, which is our winter season at the Moonlight. It's on the stage. It's 132 tickets, a very intimate setting, and saw Susan Egan. It was a very good time. And coming up, we have Frank Sinatra for two nights, and then we have Laura Ellis, which is a jazz cabaret preview in March. So, very exciting that the New Club M is sold out, and then the Moonlight variety shows are happening throughout the spring and the fall. And those are on sale now. Thank you.
How about our attorney? Do you have anything to add today?
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
City clerk? Kathy Valdez?
I wanted to remind individuals that we have our annual recruitment for commissions and committees. Information is available on the website, or I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, with that, anything else? I will adjourn us at 7:14.